The meeting is open. Come to order, please. First on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to the board on a matter that's not on the agenda? You're all here for something that is on the agenda. When you do come to speak, please go to the podium and use the microphone. It looks like a microphone, but it isn't really. It's to connect us to FCTV. So it doesn't really make any of us in the room more able to hear you, but it makes you able to be heard at home on FCTV. So please go there when it's your turn to speak and give your name and what you're there to speak on. Paul, the minutes of the last meeting.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of July 11, 2023, as corrected. And the correction was basically adding some information about the committee reports with respect to the what are calling management meetings. There were two big meetings and there was a rather short, brief summary because Kristin did not have that before the meeting. So that was added. And I advised the town planner of that.
Good, then it'll be part of the record. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Moving on. First matter before us is a planning board decision. The applicant is Mark Satharis. A site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 141 Carriage Shop Road. And we have a draft decision. We had expected to have that tonight, and we haven't. And I think, Bob, are you prepared to read it?
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Draft, July 25, 2023. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Mark Satharis for the construction of an attached accessory apartment located over the garage on the 45,302 square foot lot located at 141 Carriage Shop Road under Section 240, 12.2, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for plan entitled Subsurface Sewage Disposal System Design Plan Prepared by Land Planning, Inc., Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated June 21st, 2019, with most recent revision of May 5th, 2023, along with the architectural drawings entitled Satharis Residence at 141 Carriage Shop Road. East Falmouth Math Sheets, A1 through A2, prepared by John Watts Custom Homes, Scale 1 quarter inch equals 1 foot, with the following findings. The 45,302 square foot lot is located in the Agricultural A, AGA, zoning district in the coastal pond Wacoit Bay overlay district. The property currently contains 1,886 square foot principal dwelling and a garage foundation. The applicant seeks to construct a 735 square foot attached accessory apartment above the new garage, which will be 29% of the principal dwelling. The property will now have a total of four bedrooms, two bedrooms on the first floor of the principal dwelling, a third bedroom on the second floor, and a one-bedroom accessory apartment. The applicant stated that the room on the second floor of the principal dwelling is currently used for storage. However, the health department's referral indicated that it would meet the definition of a bedroom. Therefore, it makes the principal dwelling a three-bedroom structure. The proposed garage accessory apartment will be connected to the principal dwelling by a covered breezeway, and the building commission has determined it to be in the attached structure. Potable water for the property is provided by an existing well on the lot, and three dry wells are proposed to catch the runoff from the new roof areas. The application shows a two-car garage as well as a large crushed stone driveway, which complies with Section 246.1B and Section 240-14.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to the building code and zoning. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 246.1B of the zoning bylaw. The planning board considered the submitted referrals and the applicant's response in this matter, and the board will condition its decision accordingly. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes will be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification needs to be done. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that conditions are met and predecessor approvals have been met. Pursuant to Section 240-6.1B, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority with purposes to provide affordable housing. Pursuant to Section 240-6.1B of the zoning bylaw, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. The owner occupied dwelling cannot be rented while owner is absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months, or weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals are expressly prohibited. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Pursuant to Section 240-6.1B of the zoning bylaw, an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, testing that the principal dwelling has been, or accessory apartment, has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth. Construction activities should not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties in town right away. Project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Seven, the applicant shall contact the engineering division to address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1, a fixing of legible number, required time limit for compliance.
Thank you, Bob. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? On the motion? No.
Quick discussion. I just wanted to point out that the difference between this is the town building inspector has determined it's an attached structure. So it now makes it by right development approved by the planning board and doesn't have to go to the ZBA. Just everyone's questioning why it's different, but that was a key determination that he made. Changes it so it's a by right and it doesn't go to ZBA because of that.
It's attached to a breezeway.
Yeah. But the breezeway is considered...
Right.
That's his determination. That's his determination. Our previous building inspector didn't do that.
Yeah.
So I just want to point that out. So people want to know in the future, that's a good thing.
It is a very good thing. So if you want a quick approval, attach it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and thanks, Bob.
So much for summarizing the conditions.
Yeah, really, that's fallen by the wayside, but we will bring it up between meetings.
Practice. Practice makes perfect, right?
Yeah.
Next up is a public hearing. The applicant is David Zenga, defendant of plan application to create a one-lot subdivision at Zero Beagle Lane. We had expected tonight to be closing this hearing and moving on, but because of, there's a couple of complications with this, and so we will not be closing the hearing, but we will be looking for a continuation. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Mr. Zenga? No.
Would you like me to summarize?
Yes, please.
So at your last meeting, the applicant provided a, or after the last meeting, the applicant provided a list of waivers that we were reviewing. Subsequent to that, and you know, during that process, we were approached by several of the folks who owned or own property in that subject area that we talk about, that A&R that was endorsed in 1982. And had indicated that in the past they were denied building permits based on inadequacy of Beagle Lane. And so, you know, we did some research. We started doing some research and we found some of those determinations. In fact, we found one in particular. And in that determination, or in that letter from the current building commissioner at the time, they referenced a determination of access, which of course we're familiar with. But that is a different process that we're undergoing at this time with this applicant. And so of course that raised some red flags with us. And so we wanted to do a little bit more digging and research before issuing a final decision, just to make sure that what we're doing in this process is legally sound for the board and for the applicant. So we're just asking for two more weeks. We realize that's an extension of time and it's more waiting, but we feel like it's best to be thorough, better than...
And Mr. Zenga's been contacted and he's aware of all this?
I did contact Mr. Zenga this afternoon. Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Paul.
Is this a legal issue or is this an internal issue that staff is going to determine?
I think it's a bit of both, because as we've talked about before, and as I articulated at the last meeting, we're here because of a covenant that was attached to an A&R, which clearly spelled out the requirement of providing a subdivision plan of land. And past determinations or past letters indicated a determination of access. There's also a question about subdivisions and one-lot subdivisions and the sort of the spirit of the subdivision control law. So again, those are just answers that we need to consult with legal, but also do some research on our end. So it's a bit of both.
It's a question of how much whatever we decide about this parcel reflects on other parcels that are in a civil situation.
That too.
So we would like to see it as a standalone, but we don't know that that's true.
Yeah. So we're going to go back to the history books and interview a past planner to get some institutional knowledge and make sure that we're just doing things correctly.
Okay, so a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you. Okay, next up.
Continue to what date, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our next meeting is July, I believe it's August 8th.
August 8th.
Thank you.
Perhaps we'll check with the applicant to make sure that that works for them, August 8th.
We'll wait for a decision from the board. It's up to you folks. I would just remind you folks that we've been through this process now for quite a while. And I think we've been trying to follow everything that we've been told to follow up to this point. It's just getting a little discouraging. That's all.
I can understand that. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Also a public hearing, that we have closed the hearing. The applicant is Michael Colasso, the special permit application for parking within five feet of a property line, and that is connected to the next item, so we'll deal with them together. We are not reopening that hearing. We're instead, we close the hearing with the understanding that we would accept correspondence.
I apologize. We just realized that on the previous agenda item, perhaps you may want to take public comment if anyone's here. We realize it's a little late, but again, it's a public hearing. And so if anyone came with the expectation to provide public comment, they may, maybe just want to offer that.
Is on Beagle Lane.
On Beagle Lane. I apologize.
Anyone here to speak about Mr. Zenga's proposal? No.
Yep.
Yeah, perhaps.
Oh.
Madam Chair, I had recused myself from this hearing. I thought it was just going to be a pass.
Right.
Jed?
Yep, good luck. I know.
My family has owned that land for many, many years.
Could you please give your name?
Edward Graham.
Thank you.
My grandfather bought that land many years ago, and it was left to my mother and father and my brothers and sisters. And we've tried a few times to build on that land, and they said, because of the T-ticket post office and the animal hospital, there's not enough right of way for fire trucks and things to go on down that road. There's a, my brother tried, one of my brothers tried. I've lived here all my life, and I was expecting some of my cousins to be here too today, but they didn't show up. But I think it's wrong. The other, you know, they let the cat place go in down there, and there was a lot of questions about that at the time. But I think it's completely wrong. All of a sudden they changed the bylaws to let this guy move in and no one else can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to that?
Well, those are the types of things that we had been hearing over the past week, so that's why we're doing that additional research, to make sure that if this subdivision gets approved by this board, that any and all owners, in addition to the current applicant, would have the same path forward, that we're not violating the covenant that's already in place.
So there's another two weeks to look into that?
Correct.
Because I believe we have, as for the fire department's opinion, they found that it was adequate.
Correct.
Yeah, that was the point. The fire department did look at it, and this applicant, I believe, has addressed the width of the street, which is different from any other. Those are the two things that are different.
Right.
So if any of the people who were denied in the past came forward now and wanted to build, they would be allowed to build?
And that's exactly the, yes, the question is absolutely to that question, but also in what fashion? And is the fashion in which this applicant is doing it the correct way?
Yeah.
Because we just, like I said, we've seen another way it was done in the past, and I can explain more perhaps when the applicant's here at the next hearing.
And it opens up the can of worms if the whole road needs to be improved for other development to go on in there. And, you know, one of the sticking points is people like it the way it is and don't want those types of improvements, which is why when they come out with the list of waivers, I was willing to go along with them because of the neighbors wanting to keep it, the character that was there.
Right.
So we're in a real...
Under normal circumstances, I think I've said this before, under normal circumstances, this would be a determination of access.
Yeah.
Right.
But because there's a covenant tied to this A&R, it makes things a bit more complicated.
Yeah.
And again, because all of the lots within the A&R were individually owned, it's even further complicated.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the people on the street apply to have that private road approved, adopted by the town?
Yes. Yes, and it's currently on their...
So there's some willingness for it to comply?
Jim?
Well, if my memory serves, once we determined it has access, that's done. Because that's exactly what we went through on a couple other streets, that once we determined access, that was the issue, and then the other rights started in place. So they, years ago, they determined the access was there.
In 82, they actually didn't. They created the covenant because they waived the frontage requirement for the A&R endorsement.
But they got the A&R, which means it had proper access, not a proper sub condition.
Well, so they got the A&R endorsement to convey the properties.
Yep.
But they specifically indicated that the covenant restricted the land. What they didn't indicate was that Beagle Lane was inadequate. They just said, we're waiving the frontage requirement.
How can the lane be inadequate on one side and adequate on the other side for people for cats?
It's...
Same road.
These are terrific questions. All questions that we've been asking during this period of time, and it's, hence the two-week extension request.
Paul.
Madam Chair, this is a point of order. We closed the hearing and the applicant left, and now we're having a discussion on this project. I don't think that's appropriate. So since we're going to continue this till next week, I think this discussion should be picked up next week, not when the applicant's not here.
Yep.
You're absolutely right.
Yep.
All right, so we're going to move along, and we did continue that.
Thank you for the clerk keeping us in line.
Yes.
Appreciate you trying to explain it, but it's not fair to not have the applicant here.
I agree with you. Okay. Now, Michael Colasso, your matter, and we had closed that hearing, allowing it to receive correspondence, but not to hear again any part of a hearing. So it's time for the board to make that correspondence public and to have a discussion among ourselves. So, let's see, I think we all have copies of the letter. There are two letters, they're both long, and I think we're going to read them into the record.
Madam Chair, if I may, just procedurally, perhaps a summary of what happened in the past so that we can be clear about what we want to do or what you may want to do with the special permit public hearing? So on June 13th, you may remember, you folks voted to close the public hearing. Since that time, new material has been submitted. It's my recommendation that you vote to reopen the hearing, to reconsider that new material. In fact, one of the site plans we do have for the board's consideration in your packet, but also on the screen. That way, this new material can be entered into the record, and you can move on with...
When did we receive this? This is different from our conversation this afternoon.
So this material was submitted on July 10th, and it's a bit complicated because at the time, there was still movement on what was being done with the parking notes within the site plan. And the parking notes needed to be revised to accurately reflect, you know, what the parking calculation included. So that information really should be included back into the public record. Because ultimately, if you do decide to move forward with an approval, that plan needs to be part of the public record so we can reference that plan in the special permit. Public meeting is still open, as you know, but that special permit, you've technically closed the hearing.
I'm swallowing my anger. It doesn't taste good. Okay, so we'll reopen the hearing.
You should...
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I would say a motion.
So if we could have a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed. So what have we got? John's gone.
I don't believe John's recused himself from this.
We'll wait for John to come back.
Yeah.
We need you.
Forty AM are up front here.
The issue is on reopening the hearing, the meeting.
For 545 Main Street.
545 Main.
It was moved and seconded and voted.
I was out of the room, I didn't vote.
Hear the motion again, please.
The motion is to reopen the meeting and the hearing, and it's been seconded, and now it's being voted. And so far, the vote is three to two.
I'm opposed to it.
No, it's...
I think...
I voted in favor.
Yeah, there are three of you and two of us.
Oh, you opposed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And John opposed?
I voted, no.
Don't reopen?
Correct, no.
So it's tied?
So, fair enough.
That's what happened.
So just so you know, the decision isn't going to match the site plan now. Because you won't reopen the meeting...
The hearing.
The hearing, to see the revised plan. So the decision that you're going to have is going to reference...
Is it a material revision?
Could it be done administratively? What, how big a deal is this?
How material a revision is it? I see a little yellow mark. What is this about?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, if we're discussing it, I perhaps...
I'm asking, is this a material revision? Because it could be done administratively.
Well, again, it's my understanding that when you close a public hearing, no new testimony or new documents can be submitted after you close the hearing.
And what difference would this make to the project? How big a change is involved in whatever this is?
Well, so the plan itself has a title block and a revision section, and so when you go to approve a special permit or a site plan, you reference the title block and the revision date. That way, you know which revision or which version of the plan you are approving, or the public knows. And so this particular plan, which is in your packet, which has revisions to the parking requirements language, was revised, as you can see, on the revision block on July 7th. You closed the public hearing on June 13th. So in order, all we're asking is that you reopen the hearing so that you can introduce this new plan, and then discuss it. That way, there, when you do eventually close and go to a vote, we can reference...
I don't think you answered the question.
So the parking requirement language is what changed? Is it material? Absolutely, yes.
It changed from what to what?
It changed from less information to more. So in particular, as you can see, mixed residential and commercial overlay district is spelled out. It references the one parking space per dwelling unit at 34 spaces. I believe the additional information was number five, the reduction as requested with the section of the zoning bylaw. I believe those are the two major adjustments.
What is the sense of the board?
So do we move to continue it till you get a full board?
We could do that, or we could just reopen, I suppose, and accept this.
Or determine that this is, is this just changes to the title block as we're talking about?
No, it added the parking space.
The numbers of parking places have changed?
So this was for parking within five feet of a property line, and they added a space within five feet of the property line.
But aren't all the spaces they had talked about within five feet of the property line?
Correct, but this is a new space.
They added a space.
But how many spaces do they have within the five feet of property line on the existing plan?
Most of them.
Okay.
I don't have a count.
We've already discussed this five-fit issue already.
Absolutely.
We're just telling you from our viewpoint.
I understand. I understand. I believe this is something that can be done administratively, it's very minor, but whatever.
Any other opinions on the board?
I agree with Jim.
So let's leave this closed. We're just going to leave it closed and do it administratively, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So what remains to do is to deal with the two letters that we've received, each from an attorney. They're both long. Suppose you could read them into the record yourself if you wished, or we can read them. Attorney Kirk's is relatively short. Bob, would you like to read that one?
Which one?
Kirk?
Edward Kirk's letter.
Okay. Okay, this is to Jed Cornoch from Edward Kirk Esquire regarding 545 Main Street. Dear Jed, dated July 10th, 2023. It is my understanding from watching the last hearing that the file is open for receipt of further correspondence, which shall be read into the record at the upcoming meeting on July 11th, 2023. On behalf of the trustees and unit owners of the Pond View Condominiums, which is located at 536 Main Street, directly across the street from the above described premises, I would like to offer a few observations to you and the board with respect to the pending decisions. One, according to the applicant, there are 34 individual residential dwelling units. There are an additional 37 units, which together with the restaurant constitute commercial accommodations, i.e. boarding, lodging, motel, hotel in. As I read the bylaw, there is no provision to allow for a reduction in the required parking for the commercial accommodations, only for the residential. The only basis for reducing the number of spaces required for the 34 residential units is a car sharing program to be approved in advance by the board that it has not been presented or approved. At present, there is insufficient parking provided for the project, Section 247, 5F2D. Two, a proposal to satisfy the parking requirements by a prohibition against the required number of cars is a distortion of the obvious purpose, intent, and requirement of the parking bylaw, i.e. to provide sufficient parking on-site or nearby for the proposed use and in accordance with the objective standards required by the bylaw. The presence of bicycles on the premise is irrelevant. Three, as the attached plan indicates, the subject premises consist of two lots with a total of 67,000 square feet. A portion of the real lot where mixed-use parking is proposed is located in a general residence district. There is a specific regulation which governs the new mixed use, which butts residentially zoned property. The plan shows a number of parking spaces to be located within the general residence district, and a number of parking spaces which are within 20 feet of the residential district. This proposal would appear to conflict with the specific 20-foot setback requirement set forth in Section 247, 5F2H with respect to new mixed uses. That section renders any spaces located within 20 feet of the district line and any spaces actually in the residential district ineligible for consideration as mixed-use parking. There is no language in Section 240, 14.11, 5B, which would authorize the planning board to grant a special permit for these spaces which are shown to violate the zoning-based restriction. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of these points. Edward W. Kirk.
And then we have a response to that letter. That letter was dated July 10th from Edward Kirk, speaking for the, is it Pond View Condominium? I believe he represents...
Yes, that's correct.
Right. And we have a response to that. Then we have a response to that from Amen Clower, dated July 11th. I can read. This is in response to the three numbered paragraphs in Ed Kirk's correspondence to you dated July 10th. Mr. Cod bylaw, Section 247.5F2, contains two sentences allowing the planning board to reduce parking. The first sentence allows a reduction in the residential parking where a car-sharing program is provided and approved by the planning board. The planning board has received sufficient information about the proposed car-sharing program. If the board feels that more information will be helpful, questions are welcome. The board can approve a car-sharing program in its site plan review decision with appropriate conditions. The second parking reduction sentence in that section separately allows the planning board to reduce parking where mixed-use share parking. Parking reduction is the intent of the share parking provision. Some restaurant employees and customers will occupy the residential or commercial accommodation units, reducing the parking needs. Both the commercial accommodation units and the residential units are intended for a population that are much less likely to have cars than typical multifamily residents or commercial accommodation occupants. Second point, the proposed prohibition of occupants to have cars is a reflection of the nature of the units being developed and of the population that will be served. Based on experience, Michael Galasso believes that many of the occupants will have no intent or wish to use a car and will willing be among those prohibited from having cars. The zoning bylaw allows parking reduction, not only in the Mr. Cod bylaw, but also by special permit from the zoning board of appeals under Section 240.13.1F3. A, upon the board's determination that special circumstances apply, the proposed use of the existing former nursing home building for affordable housing and workforce accommodations can constitute special circumstances. Ed says that the presence of bicycles is irrelevant. Michael submits that the shared electric car program, the eight-passenger van operated by the facility to transport occupants to jobs and shopping, the fleet of well-maintained and stored regular and electric bikes, the location of public transportation routes, and walking distance from employment opportunities and shopping are all very relevant with respect to parking demand and the requested reduction in required parking. Three, Mr. Cod, Section 247.5F2H, concerns building setbacks and does not restrict parking from being within twenty-foot side and rear setback areas mentioned therein. Furthermore, the references to new mixed-use buildings, this proposal concerns an existing building and not substantially more detrimental as determined by the planning board. The existing building nonconformances allowed to remain, if not substantially more detrimental, would include the parking. The proposed parking has the same setback as the parking that served the hundred-twenty-one-bed nursing home for several decades. To the extent Mr. Kirk's paragraph about parking setbacks is intended to concern the special permit requesting parking within five feet of the property line, which the planning board can allow under Section 240.14.11.5B, I note that the hearing on that application is closed. Very truly yours, Bob Amen. We have a third letter, much more recent, from Mr. Amen, July 25th, about Main Street Site Plan Review. Dear Jed, completing site plan review for the proposed redevelopment of the former nursing home has been delayed while answers were sought from the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. What... Paul, you have an issue?
I don't have that. Go ahead with this.
Yeah, I think you do.
No.
Yeah, they were emailed. Does everyone have it?
Are you reading it?
Okay.
Listening?
Thank you. I'm going to start over. Complete site plan review for the proposed redevelopment of the former nursing home has been delayed. While answers were sought from the State's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly the Department of Housing and Community Development, particularly about the acronym DIRECTION, that the residential units to be on the subsidized housing inventory must be in separate ownership from the rest of the redevelopment. The only way the residential units could be in separate ownership in any single building, mixed-use project, would be to establish the property as a condominium, and then deed the condominium units intended to be SHI, subsidized and housing inventory residential units, to a different entity. We have not determined that this would satisfy EO HLC, but it may not be feasible for this project to divide the building into seventy-one or seventy-two of the restaurant condominium units, each separately taxed property. Mr. Galasso thinks that he may be unable to finance the project in the condominium form of ownership. We see no reason why there cannot be a regulatory agreement entered into by the single owner of the entire rental property with the town and the EO HLC regulating in perpetuity the rental and occupancy of the designated residential units. And that, for people who may not know, that provision for a regulation, a regulatory agreement, is part of our bylaw. It's there. Mr. Galasso will need to work with the EO HLC and different financing entities, several may be involved, to qualify the residential units for the SHI and to meet lender requirements, and this will take time. Mr. Galasso feels that he cannot effectively seek financing arrangements until he has at least the site plan review approval to show lenders. The Mr. Cod bylaw requires that the development be eligible for approval as an LAU-LIP units. Would you like to say what those acronyms stand for?
LAU is local action unit. LIP is local initiative program.
Thank you. Local action units, local initiative program units, that's sort of like a local forty-B setup, are otherwise eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. You feel that such eligibility must be determined prior to site plan review approval. The U in that sentence is Mr. Cornoch, the town planner, is being addressed, and yet you agree that there would be EO HLC conditions to be satisfied later, such as separating ownership if required. Mr. Galasso submits that SHI eligibility can and must be a condition to be met later in the permitting process. Mr. Galasso also points out that if the town that files an application for inclusion of units on the SHI, there should be a cooperative effort to get as many units as possible in this redevelopment on the SHI. Site plan review decisions and special permits can and often are issued subject to conditions, including obtaining permits from other boards and agencies. To require SHI eligibility to be determined at this stage is unnecessary, and this issue has been a diversion from moving the project forward. The site plan review decision appropriately conditioned can protect all interests to be addressed under the Mr. Cod bylaw and site plan review. If the applicant cannot obtain a special permit form, the CBA if required, or cannot obtain select board approval of the proposed LAU-LIP units, or cannot satisfy or have waived certain EO HLC conditions for SHI inclusion, a building permit may not be issued, and the redevelopment will not occur. Mr. Cod may be the only feasible way to approve the proposed redevelopment under Falmouth zoning. To approve all the units as commercial accommodations does not work, where for financing purposes, some of the units need to be year-round rentals. Commercial accommodations won't qualify for the SHI. A mixed-use business redevelopment district project not under Mr. Cod could make sense, but then the density of residential units would be limited to eight acres, eight units per acre for financing purposes. Mr. Galasso will need more than twelve units available for year-long rentals. EO HLC has advised you that the proposed one-bedroom and larger studio apartments, a total of twenty-six units, can qualify for the SHI. Thus, the applicant requests that the planning board's site plan review decision approve those twenty-six units as Mr. Cod residential units, on the condition that all of those units be approved by the select board as LAU-LIP units, and that seven of those twenty-six units, which would be twenty-seven percent, divided between one-bedroom units and studio units be permanently restricted, subject to an affordable housing regulatory agreement as affordable units rented for a period of a year or longer. The applicant further asked the planning board in its site plan review decision to give the town planner authority to approve additional residential units, up to thirty-four units, twenty units per acre, as allowed by Mr. Cod, with the number of affordable units increased proportionately. If such additional units are approved by the select board and EO HLC as SHI yearly rental units, for each additional residential unit, there will be one fewer commercial accommodation unit. The total number of residential units and commercial units in this Mr. Cod mixed-use project will be seventy-one, the number originally asked for. The planning board can reduce parking where there is a car-share program, and separately, the planning board can reduce parking where the parking is shared between the residential and commercial components. Sufficient information has been provided to support the requested reduction in parking, with fifty-nine spaces provided on-site. We do expect to have an arrangement for additional parking at St. Patrick's Church, but we believe the planning board is prepared to support the reduction in on-site parking in any case. The board could vote its site plan review decision with the condition that the applicant secure an off-site parking agreement, subject to the board's administrative review and approval, but the board may not feel this is necessary. The applicant expects many of the occupants not to have cars and can let units, both residential units and commercial accommodation units, with the condition that the tenant guests not have a car. The property is on a public transportation route. It's within walking distance of shopping. It will have a car-share program, storage for electric and regular bikes, and there will be a facility van for transportation to jobs and shopping. These are all particular circumstances that make reducing parking feasible and advantageous. The applicant is disappointed that several weeks have passed since the board voted to have a positive motion prepared for the special permit for parking within five feet of the property line, but to our knowledge, no motion has been presented. The applicant asks that the board vote on site plan review at tonight's hearing. If there needs to be one more continuance so that the positive vote can be set forth in a fully drafted decision, the applicant can agree to that. Very truly yours, Bob Robert Amen. For Michael Galasso. So, these are the things that we have been advised by the attorneys. We've also been advised by the town attorney that he thinks that we should wait. So, we have three attorneys who wish to influence what we're going to decide, but it's time for the board to discuss that and for Jed to have a comment also. So, would anyone like to start? Jim?
Well, I think, this is a lot of words here from a lot of attorneys, but the long the short of it is, I believe that this gives the planning board the flexibility to determine that we can get less parking when we need it and... Or if we don't need it. And our town is way overparked. It blocks all kinds of housing developments and everything, and I think this is a reasonable approach, using our new bylaw, Mr. Cod, which was the intent to give the planning board the flexibility to determine these changes, and I believe this is exactly what this does.
John?
I agree. I agree with Jim, and I'd like to add that I don't feel that the additional parking at St. Patrick's is necessary. This applicant has gone above board to present other options for people that are around the town of Falmouth, other than an automobile.
Other comment? Pat?
I totally agree with John. I mean, I think this is... I think we need to move this ahead. I'm sort of feeling like it's an innovative, totally different concept to provide affordable housing, and I'd like to see it move forward.
And this is an unused building. I mean, this is exactly what we want to see. It's on Main Street, right downtown. It couldn't be, in my opinion, a better use for the structure.
Agreed. Paul or Bob?
No, I agree with what's been said.
My little concern is we're referring to this as affordable housing. I think this is workforce housing rather than affordable housing.
No, it's for...
I think that's synonymous.
Sorry?
It's synonymous. It means the same thing?
Yeah, you finished saying what I'm talking about? Thank you. I'm finished.
Oh, okay. You know, I've thought a lot about this. We've had this in front of us for a long time, longer perhaps than it really might have been, but it's good to be careful. This is our first Mr. Cod project, and it's a big project. And I guess what I'd really like to emphasize is how much it really fulfills what we were hoping for when a subgroup of us got together and got this up and brought it to the board and amended it, did public hearings, went to town meeting, got it approved. And here is the whole point of the thing, and I'd like to read that. I just think it's worth really emphasizing the purpose and intent of Mr. Cod. This project, just as you listen to what the purpose was, listen to how well the project fits it. First, to enable the town to reach its goal of ten percent of housing on the subsidized housing inventory. It's going to help us do that. To incentivize developers, such as Mr. Galasso, and property owners to create workforce, senior, and affordable family rental and ownership housing opportunities by increasing residential density and mixed use where appropriate, what could be more appropriate than Main Street. To promote economic vitality and a greater diversity of housing opportunities in Falmouth. To mitigate traffic congestion by promoting housing proximate to compatible commercial uses. And it'll be downtown. You can walk to the library, to the stores, to the restaurants, to the workplaces. To promote consistency, quality, and flexibility in site layout and building design. Going to read that one again. Consistency, quality, and flexibility in site layout and building design. This is repurposing a nursing home to make it affordable housing and workforce housing and have a small restaurant in it. It's ideal. To provide housing for people at all stages of life and all levels of income, as set forth on the town's local comprehensive plan. Most of our large projects have really been senior housing under forty-B. They haven't been workforce, and to say that they're affordable, oh, we all have our little caveats when we think about that. And finally, to enable the creation of livable, walkable neighborhoods in the town's business districts, and this is an admirable project, so, under all of those purposes. So, now, we're going to ask, I think we should, for an emotion at our next meeting, and to condition it appropriately. Jed, would you like to say something first?
I would, if I may. I, too, think that, you know, the applicant has really worked hard, and, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this application, as you know, and we've sort of been back and forth and trying to, you know, come to yes, if you will. But I do want to bring three items to the board's attention, just so that you're aware of issues that we know of. First and foremost, the letter does indicate the state's response to the applicant and indicates that two legal entities would need to be created in order for these units to be eligible for SHI inclusion. I do want to emphasize that the state, in conversation with us, indicated this has never been done before. It's never been seen in the state in their entire experience. Obviously, we've never seen it in the town either, so it's an extremely unique proposal. The second part is a density issue. As you know, this proposal is being brought forward as a mixed-use development. The issue here is that, under a Mr. Cod development, your residential units would be capped at thirty-four. In addition to that, as a commercial use, your commercial accommodations, in addition to that, would likely, if only be as presented as commercial accommodations, would be capped at sixty-two. There's a detailed calculation found in your zoning bylaw in the lot, minimum lot size section. It's Section eleven point four, I believe. And the third issue is that the Mr. Cod bylaw specifically, and I'll read it for the record, indicates that developments must be eligible for approval as local action units. This is a development in its whole. A development in its whole is seventy-one units, as indicated in the letter. Those are not eligible. All units are not eligible to be included in the SHI. And in addition to that, in a further section, it says one-hundred percent of the rental dwelling units shall be eligible for inclusion. Again, we're speaking to the issue of these two legal entities, and what I'm seeing in the letter is that perhaps there either is confusion about the two legal entities, or perhaps that there's an unwillingness at this stage. And I would just bring that to your attention to indicate that conformance with the bylaw is our job, is our job to make sure that every applicant comes through and is conforms to the bylaw. We see these three issues as outstanding issues, and, you know, we hope that you'd, you know, consider those.
John?
Jed, what is it about this that the state has never seen before?
It's the combination of long-term residential, the year-long leases, and the transient-type leases, the month-to-month. They've never seen that combination in a mixed-use development that applies to be eligible for the SHI.
But it doesn't mean that it's wrong.
It certainly does not mean that it's wrong. They've just never seen it, and that speaks to the uniqueness that we're dealing with here. here, which speaks to the delay, which speaks to all of the questions, because, again, it's another complicated case.
But isn't it true, it's no longer unique to us? We've been looking at this for a while. If it moves on from us, if we approve, if we approve the site plan, and it moves on from us, then this question will go forward to the people who actually can make a decision about that. We're making our decision. It gives them the opportunity to make theirs. Is that right?
It does, provided that I'm understanding the language in the letter correctly. So the way I read the letter, it says they may not want to do that condo structure, those two legal entities, rather they would ask HLC to consider something else. And, again, your bylaw says that they need to comply with what DHCD is requesting. Again, uniqueness of the project, and currently, I don't see that.
Right, but we really shouldn't be guessing what they might answer. We can give our answers to what we know about, to what concerns us. If we approve the site plan, it can move on to that next forum, rather than stopping it right here on the speculation that they can't think it through. I don't know why we should doubt them like that.
Well, just to be clear, DHCD has made it clear that two legal entities would be required in order for SHI eligibility.
That's before they've really heard directly from the applicants.
Absolutely not. It's actually during the process, and so we've been involved in an email thread that's sort of been going back and forth, and they have made that abundantly clear, at the beginning, middle, and end, that in order for it to work and be eligible for SHI inclusion, it has to be separated from those commercial accommodation units legally. And that speaks to the uniqueness of the project.
Bob, we've closed the hearing.
Technically, your meeting is still open. Just remind the board that if you're currently in the special permit hearing, which you have closed, and we're discussing that, it's really related to parking. But if we're talking about the larger project under site plan review, that public meeting is still open.
I have a question.
Jim?
Isn't our approval conditional upon getting this approved?
It is. We'd condition it.
Isn't that part of our condition?
Well, in this case, because the bylaw, so the answer is no.
It's not?
Because in this case, your bylaw specifically says that it needs to be eligible, and being eligible is, think of it as like a check mark. One of those items is those two legal entities, which, again, I'm reading in the letter, may not happen, so.
Our bylaw calls for twenty-five percent to be workforce housing?
Affordable rent.
Whatever terminology you want to use?
Yeah.
And this is twenty-seven percent?
This would be twenty-seven percent of the residential units, yes.
That's not how it's not qualifying, though.
Right.
What?
So the Mr. Cod units have to be one entity, owned by one entity. The commercial accommodation units have to be owned by a separate entity.
So you're saying this is just a question of who owns it?
Correct.
And if you read the letter carefully, it doesn't seem that they're willing to do that, but I could be misreading that. And so I asked the board, do you read it the same way? And...
Well, to me, there are a number of peculiar things. One owner can own two properties. Those properties can have adjoining walls.
According to DHCD, it has to be two separate legal entities.
It could be, but it's still one owner. Mr. Amen?
We can come up with a lot of technical issues. That will stop this project, instead of moving it forward, and we shouldn't do that. Yes, I've communicated a bit with the staff at the E-H-C-O.
E-O. Those state agencies and their acronyms.
Thank you. I've communicated with the state, and actually, the state is throwing this back to the town in many regards. At the end of the last communication, to me, the attorney for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities says the requirement that a certain number, and perhaps type, of units qualify for the SHI relates to local zoning requirements and not EOHLC requirements. Everybody seems to agree this is unique. The state hasn't seen this before. We're not sure that the state won't, upon further discussion with local approvals, with local support, which I don't feel we've been getting, that the state won't agree that a single-building project, a mixed-use project, which is allowed under our local bylaw, encouraged and appropriate in this case, very appropriate, can't be owned by a single owner who enters into a regulatory agreement that restricts how the affordable units, as designated, those units which will be housing units, rented for a year at least, have to be rented and occupied with the housing lottery and everything else that's involved for an affordable housing project. We believe that can be done, and frankly, I think it will be done, even though the state has not yet agreed to do that. We do know of another project in which the state has approved the regulatory agreement for condominium units that are in a mixed-use, a mixed condominium, where we have rental units and for-sale units, and the regulatory agreement has been entered into by the single owner of all of the condominium units at this time. That's Lighthouse Station in Woods Hole. That was the first time they did that, and there was some difficulty getting to that result that made it work, so that we can have affordable housing in that project that will be on the SHI. And I think we should be working together to try to get the same type of result here. And yes, the zoning bylaw says that the development must be eligible for SHI. So instead of saying, well, first you have to determine your eligibility, just make that a condition. That's a requirement. We will have to get on the, have the units approved by the select board, and then by the select board. But to have that determined now, we can't do that. Mr. Colasso isn't sure that he can get a project financed if it's owned in these two entities that way that we've discussed. So it may just not work, but we have to make it work, because this is such a good project, as you all agree. And it's the right reuse of this property, and I believe that Mr. Cod is the only way to effectively do this project, with year-long rentals in a significant number of the units. That's not commercial accommodations. So I would encourage you to approve this project. I know you want to. I know that there are issues. They will have to be addressed going forward, but I think we should, that as a town, the board, the staff, the select board, need to work together to get this project approved, and then to get the regulatory approvals that we will also need.
Let me see if I've understood you. You said now the state really has put it back to the locality.
Well, I've read you from their letter. I, that's what they said.
I'm following up on that. That would indicate that if we vote, yes, we approve the site plan, now it's going forward beyond us. Your next step is the select board.
Well, unfortunately, our next step might be to go to the zoning board of appeals.
And then the select board.
We will have to go to the select board, and we'll be talking to the state.
Too bad there's not a way to do it concurrently.
Well, we've been talking to the state already, you know, but we need to know what the town will approve and support, and it starts here.
Well, this board wants to support you. Any comment?
I just would like to move this forward, really.
Let me just add that this, this is a mixed-use project. The zoning bylaw does not say that you figure out the number of residential units, that twenty units acre, and you can't do anything else. No, it says that the board needs to look at the whole project and determine if it's appropriate, if there's sufficient parking, if you're meeting setbacks, and so on. And yes, there are proposed seventy-one units total, housing and commercial accommodations. And yes, it's true that if you were just doing commercial accommodations and you figured out what the bylaw allows, the figure would be sixty-two. But you could also have a sixty-two-seat restaurant. That's clear. You can do that. We're not asking for that, so we're not overdeveloping the site. Whatever overdevelopment there is, it's already there. Just trying to use this, use this site. So I actually, in my correspondence, have included language which I think will help in the kind of conditions that should be included on some of these issues. And I know that the staff has concerns about the project. We think we have to deal with those after we get this approval. Thank you.
Okay, procedurally, we need to deal first with the parking within the five feet?
Yes.
And where are we on that?
You did not reopen the hearing.
Right, so I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Would, how about this? I would say perhaps just a direction to have the staff prepare a positive motion for next meeting, for that special permit approval.
For the special permit approval.
Right.
Okay, so, on in favor?
Aye.
Yep, please do that. And then on the site plan review, do we wish to ask for a positive motion for that also? Appropriately conditioned. And I'm sure you will be working on that in the meantime?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and we would see it in draft form as it goes along.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that would be ready for our next meeting, which is August?
August eight.
Can I just ask that the board authorize the town planner to share the draft decision with the applicant, so that we can work together and make sure that it's going to work as best we can?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I thought you were working together.
Always.
Always.
Good. That's the way it ought to be.
Hand-in-hand.
That's good. And thank you for sticking with it. So, it's a great project. It would be a shame to see it not move forward, really. Thank you.
Jeff's laughing.
Now, we have...
Sarah.
Excuse me?
No.
Oh. Our next applicant is Conserve Group, Inc. This is the site plan review for the municipal police training facility at eighty-one Technology Park Drive, public meeting. Who is speak, ah, Jeff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeff Nickerson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Woods Hole Land Holdings, LLC. Let's bring up the plans, if I may. All right.
Jeff, did you want to refer to the site plan as well?
I do have the site plan on a flash drive, if I may. Okay, if I remove this flash drive?
Absolutely.
Okay, we've already admired your building.
Thank you.
So this is the site plan which the board has seen. This was the June ninth plan. This was submitted at the last meeting. As the chair mentioned, the architectural plans were submitted at the last meeting as well. Those are unchanged since that time. We submitted as well a landscaping plan at the last meeting. We do propose slight changes to this in response to some of the comments that we received on referrals, specifically from the engineering department. Those plans have not been submitted to the board. They will be submitted. I have them for reference this evening only. And we also have a lighting plan, which I believe was submitted in advance.
Yep, we got that.
Which is here. So as the board recalls, this plan is for development of a municipal police training academy up in the tech park. Mr. Robert Farullo from the municipal police training committee from the state is here this evening. He has the ability to answer any questions he might have about operations out there. Mr. Aubrey is here as well. He's the manager and member of the owner of Woods Hole Land Holdings. Roy Catagnani is the construction end of this on Conserve, and Austin Chartier from McKenzie Engineering can answer any technical questions about the plan. The board will remember that we initially had one lot, which we split into two. That was to comply with the zoning requirements necessitated by the November changes. Initially, this was one lot. We now have parcel A for the existing building and parcel B for the new building. That was approved by this board as an approval not required. That was endorsed on May twenty-two. That's currently in front of the land court. I had a conversation with the survey department at land court this morning. They had one or two minor questions that Austin's group addressed with them today. We expect that the approval by land court of that plan is imminent, hopefully within this week, if not the next. The board might also remember there was a question about the septic system at the prior hearing. We've had hearings and meetings with the Board of Health. Initially, the plan was to have a septic system which serves the existing building beyond both lots. Since the last meeting, we have withdrawn that variance request from the Board of Health, and we are going to rather proceed with a shared system, which is permitted by both the state regulations and our local regulations, so that both buildings are going to be served by a common septic system. So those plans are going to be submitted imminently to the Board of Health for approval. It's a, something that we can do by right. It doesn't require any variance by the Board of Health. The largest challenge that we saw, when we started to look through some of the comments from the referrals related to the parking, and we have some proposals that we'd like to highlight to the board that we think can solve and address that issue. We're somewhat limited here in the layout of our parking field. Again, this is the initial plan, because the board might recall that we have a really large wildlife corridor on the eastern side of the site. One of the referrals that came through was from the Department of Natural Resources. Mr. Martenson and I met out at the site. He was receptive to the plan. He was appreciative of the fact that the plan does not show any construction within the wildlife corridor, and we're trying to maintain that, but we have a limitation, in that the zoning bylaw says that we can't have parking within five feet of the lot line. The proposed solution that we have is that we would like to seek a special permit from the board to have that parking within the five feet of the lot line. I'd point out that our neighbor is ourselves here, so there will be no opposition. I can also point out that, you know, we think that there's going to be, as was shown in the lighting plan, an opportunity to share some lighting between both of the sites. So there will have some lighting that will flow from one side on to the other. That can be addressed by an easement, so then in perpetuity, there won't be any concerns by anybody about whether or not the lighting is on one side or on the other, or too bright. So we have some solutions that we can propose in terms of that, and we are happy and willing to submit a application for a special permit, which this board has the right to grant under the bylaw, for your consideration. Plan to do that as soon as tomorrow, if not the day after, so that we can get on the hearing and have that properly noticed and heard by the board. The other referrals, the fire department had no concerns. They noted that it should be sprinkled and alarmed and a knock box installed. Of course, that will be done. The fire department asked that a fire hydrant be approved as a location by the fire department. Certainly, that will be done. You know, we really feel that the parking is the biggest thing that we're trying to address, and in light of our strong desire to maintain the integrity of this wildlife easement, we would like to keep this parking where it is. One of the comments that we received from engineering was that they believed we needed a few more parking spots, and they suggested some bicycle parking. So Austin's group redrew this plan, which we will be submitting. It's difficult to see. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit here. A change from the plan that the board currently has is that one of these parking spots is going to be replaced by a bicycle parking rack. So we're going to have bicycle access parking right there. The other change is an increase to the size of this parking field to add in a few more spots, so that we have sixty-four spaces, which is reflective of what the engineering department thought that we should have for a building of this size. Austin can speak a little bit more about some of the comments that engineering had on stormwater impacts. Engineering... on stormwater impacts, engineering updates that they requested, and Roy can speak a little bit more about the lighting plan, because he's a little bit more versed in that than I am. But if the board has questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them at this time.
Okay, good. I think most of our questions, I've never seen quite so many comments from the engineers. It's impressive. So I assume they will be all addressed.
They will. So again, we do plan to submit an updated site plan that shows additional parking. We do plan to submit that special permit request. We hope the board feels that we've acted in good faith to try to move the project forward and be responsive to all the commentary that we received from the town departments, and we hope that the board will view this favorably and ultimately approve both the special permit request for the parking within the five feet of that lot line and ultimately the site plan so that this can move forward, because time really is of the essence. We have promised to try to get this building to the state as soon as possible. The state needs to get it operational as soon as possible so that they can begin training officers, and it's been several years now, I believe, that we haven't had a training facility on Cape Cod for officers, so it's imperative that we try to move forward as quickly as we can.
Do any of you wish to speak? No? Is there any member of the public who wants to comment?
I really don't have anything to add. It sounds like they're going to be addressing all of the outstanding issues, and so we look forward to seeing those and bringing them back to the board at the next meeting.
Can we call? No comment? Nope. Bob?
Just, what's the common thread with a bunch of things we've been hearing lately? It's been parking. I mean, parking is holding up so much stuff. I mean, you could put a hundred-square-foot shed in every one of those parking spots three feet from the property line, but you can't park a car within five feet? I mean, it's getting ridiculous with, you know, we keep talking about updating the parking racks, but, you know, this, this is two projects that are being held up because of where you park a car.
I think the presumption on the five feet is that you would be abutting, a house, not a wildlife corridor. I don't think that the markets are going to complain. They might complain about the light.
No, because houses are set back more than five feet.
They are.
I mean, this is a technology park, if I may allow it. I, Jesus.
These cars will come once a day, there's no motion, there's no movement, they have to be there by 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, they will not leave until 2:30, 4:00. I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
Robert Farulo from, my acronym is EOPSS, so that I fit in with the state letters. These cars will move once a day, they're students, just like a school, they'll come and they'll go. And the other thing, they'll only be here during off-season, so I know that's not relevant for where we are, but this is in October till April, October till early May. We're not going to be in anybody's way during the year, we're not going to use any significant load in the building. And number of cars for the academic part of it, these people come in pairs or fours. When, if New Bedford sends people, they'll send a dozen, and they'll come in a 12-person van, a 15-person van. So the number, even though the classroom holds 50, there won't be 50 cars associated with that, just for load, whatever that's worth. Just to address it, and we're more than willing, as I've said at the outset, we want to be part of this community, not just a tenant or landlord. We want to become part of the fiber of this community. Professional associates with the new police chief, I'm thrilled to work the relationship there, but we really, whatever we can do to, to move this, appreciative and supportive of the time that you've given us.
Okay. I think what you can do for us is the next time you're back, which probably be on August 8th.
August 8th, yep.
That you will go through the, the engineers list, and they would all be, mostly all be, they're all, just for the members that publicly might be listening, there are things that deal mostly with the site plan, dealing with wastewater, with runoff, with that kind of thing. They're technical things that are readily resolved and will be before you come back.
They will.
Madam Chair, if I may, as Attorney Nickerson was just representing, they intend to apply for a special permit. Obviously, that application will come with a notice in the paper, but also a notice to a butters and a timeline for that. We're sort of scrambling to figure out what that listing might be, but in the, I guess in the ish, or in the sense of clarity, perhaps we can, if the applicant's amenable to it, instead of meeting or having them back on the August 8th date, it would be the following to allow plenty of time for notice, then both items could be heard at the same time, special permit and the site plan, and at that time...
And the land court thing might be slightly straightened out then also?
Right.
Yeah.
And in between time, if the, you know, if the board would like us to start drafting a positive motion for that evening, we can certainly do that.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Good plan.
I think that should give us plenty of time for notice, and I believe that date would be...
Okay, so because we might be getting changed drawings as a result of the responses, why don't we leave the, the hearing open and just continue to, and what is that date?
August 22nd.
22nd.
Wait a second, though. I, can, can we still approve the draft if the hearing's still open? Don't we have to close, oh, we could close it the week before, the hearing before?
Well, so in theory, you would open the hearing on the 22nd for the special permit. You would hear from a butters and the applicant. If you so choose, you could close the hearing that evening and vote the special permit.
Close and vote then, right.
We usually don't do it the same night.
But we can.
Only if you're comfortable.
I guess we can if we want to, it's up to you.
Right. Well, I think given the nature of the butters...
I'm just pointing out that was a practice. I'm most out with doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Yes.
I would just need that application by August 1st, and I think we can use the same abutters list.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sure. I just, I'm not pushing, I'm just referring, we have a real significant time issue that if we can't get the building open by October of 2024, then we will lose a whole year, and we won't be able to run another academy, which will put the Cape four years without a training facility. And I just put that out for time, of time reference, that it, it's really critical that we have to have the pops back to the departments before May. They won't give us anybody to train during your busy season, busy season, so that we sort of need to be in October of '24, gives us the ability to run a 24-week cycle and still have them back to the community before Memorial Day. And totally supportive of all you're doing for us, appreciative, but I just want to put some reference on the timeframe, that if we can't stop by late October, that will push it into October of 2025, which is now two and a half years down the road before I can do anything with the property. And, you know, we're coming either way, but I just wanted to put that in for reference.
So you'd prefer to have it on the 8th, August 8th, the site plan review?
Sort of, 32%. If the board would be willing to consider the site plan review on the 8th with a condition as to the special permit to follow?
Yeah, you would already have filed it by then?
Yep.
So, and I don't think there's going to be an issue, so if everyone's okay with the 8th?
Yeah.
For the site plan review?
Okay.
Or a positive motion?
Okay, so we're, we're continuing to the 8th?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, good. Do we need a motion for that?
Doesn't hurt.
No.
No, we really don't.
No.
No. So we'll continue to the 8th, and thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get you done as fast as possible. Our final applicant, Stephen Spitz, site plan review to construct detached accessory apartment at 15 Canvas Way, has withdrawn his application because he cannot find a way to put the, separated, the separate unit on his property without having it be in front of his house. So that, he's withdrawn. So that brings us to announcements.
One more thing, the applicant would like, if possible, his application fee be refunded.
Do we do that? Oh, then let's do it.
Any opposition?
So I'll, I'll move to refund the application fee to Stephen Spitz for his site plan review application.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Spitz gets his money back. Okay, no announcements? Any announcements anywhere? No. Committee reports?
If I may. I like the fact that the briefing books now have some reference material in the back. It makes it very helpful. Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's very fancy.
We figured it would be helpful to have, you know, that information, especially in the, in the meeting.
I won't have to bring my own.
Exactly. It helps us, it helps you.
Oh, thank you.
Hand in hand.
We'll give it back to you. We'll give it back to you.
I hope so.
In good condition, thank you very much. I like the labels. Maybe you could take mine and I'll take yours. Any committee reports? Really? Okay.
Any question?
Yep.
This is for the town planner. In the past, I brought up that there's a requirement that, I forget the amount of days, I think it's like 60 days, after the bylaws have been proved, that it's been sent to the county clerk and they update the electronic version of that. Have we done that yet?
Yes, and that information was recently just sent back from our E-code contractors with a price proposal. I believe the clerk is handling that, and I believe that they're currently working on it.
Because I haven't seen a change yet, as an end user, still like two years old.
So, if I may, this might be a good...
I'd probably go to the wrong place. I type in code of Falmouth, and it's ancient.
So, thank you for bringing that up. This might be a good way to advertise the, where the location is.
What was that?
So in our town code, under chapter 240, which is our zoning bylaw, what they've done is, because again, they have to reformat everything with the new language of your recodification, what they've done is just included this link up at the top, so you can click that and easily access our most recent version. And then, once they're able to create or recreate this section here, these links, then it will go live, and this link, I believe, will go away.
So how long has that been there?
Uh, that's been there for a while.
I've gone by it about 20 times. I did not catch that.
It's been there two years now, Jim.
Yeah. It's not blue, you keep looking for a blue link?
No way.
Right.
What's the date on that? Two years? Come on.
Maybe two and a half.
It says, I see a date there, was it?
Yeah, I think that's the effective, although, I'm not sure, the 23, that seems, we haven't even gotten there yet. But, in any event, that's the way they're handling, I believe, the...
So the, the use table will be available online when you click on that button right there?
Correct, this, this link here.
That's fine. I'm sorry.
Okay, future agenda items. There will be an agenda item to report whatever the people working, that's no longer recodification, on the updates for the code. Working group is going to meet tomorrow.
Big meeting.
Yep. To get ready for the things that might be going to town meeting. So there'll be that on the agenda.
Yes.
Whatever our results are by that date. Anything else?
No, just a comment, I, I really like your summaries on the agendas. Boy, it is great, because, you know, as I go through these things during the week as they come in, but then just before the meeting to just go over that real quick, it's great. Keep it up.
It is, we're getting really good support. Don't always agree with you, but the support's great.
Hand in hand.
Hand in hand.
That's enough to comment, compliments for one meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Save some for next time.
It's a team effort. It is absolutely a team effort, and I wouldn't be here.
That's why it's hand in hand, Jim.
Move to adjourn?
Um, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Not even...